Ready? Okay, seven o'clock, we'll call the October twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-three Barnes County North School Board meeting to order. And the first thing we'll do is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything, Mr. Curry?
Yes, add budget, tax hearing to the minutes for approval. I don't have that one on there, we gotta approve those minutes as well.
Roma three A there?
Uh, three A, yes. So the budget and tax hearing minutes from the twenty eighth.
Twentieth.
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 Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. I think we don't need to, if that's nothing new, we'll just do it with the consent agenda. Okay, so then this consent agenda, which covers all the minutes, including the tax hearing ones, your bills and financial reports, if there's any questions on any of those. You cover yours, question with the?
Yeah, I was trying to read a report. Yep.
Any questions on any of those items? If not, we would need a motion to approve consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Jen. Any other comments? If not, roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Patron form, none?
Nothing.
Okay.
Nope.
Administrative reports, start with you, Mr. Curry, anything to add?
Uh, nothing to add, probably the biggest one, and what I've got is that second bullet point with my meeting with Barnes County Highway Department. You know, they're down workers, just like everybody else, and biggest thing she said was, what took three days is now gonna take seven to ten to get cleared. Moving forward, so, uh, we will get out some information to our patrons, just to give them a big heads up, and kind of, Bud and I have talked a little bit. Kinda maybe get a plan together on what it could look like this winter, you know, if we're not able to get to all of our kids, but maybe most of our kids, uh, moving forward, so. Yeah.
Odd question.
Yep.
Would we ever be able to talk to patrons in the area about assisting with?
I think we're gonna have to, I mean, by, I mean, the outlook that they gave me, yeah, I think we're gonna have to talk to some local guys to see if they're willing to help out.
Does our road out to the corner, because that road is horrible, so he'll just plow it out to make, and then we meet, we meet the bus at the end of the.
Yeah, the problem is, uh, Michelle, with that is, I think in the past, even people have done that, those willing to help out and already do that, I think it's just gonna be a bigger uh, problem for those who don't and never have.
Right.
The townships are doing the same thing, they're gonna have to find ways to get these things cleared, but they know it's not gonna be the next day, we're pretty sure of that, yes.
Can we have, like, community drop points? Like, almost every one of our buses goes through a small community.
Right.
Can there be at least a safe spot for it? Because I, my concern is with our bus drivers.
Right.
Because even if the patron says that they're passable, I don't want our driver doing that.
Yep.
So can we have a community drop?
Yeah, and that's something that we have to sit down and, uh, as you can see in there, I mean, my plan is to have a building grounds transportation, and that's something we need to go through in that meeting, is talk about what's this gonna do, what alternative plans can we make? You know, because we know there are gonna be some that they're not gonna get to for quite some time.
Especially mornings when it's dark.
Yep.
Right.
Right.
Get to a central spot.
Mm-hmm, but still try and, you know, to be safe and cognizant of our drivers and everybody else on the bus as well, so. Just, I appreciated the conversation and the heads up from them, so that we can plan and so that we can, you know, let everybody know and people can kind of start to plan. Even though I've been promised a good winter, I don't know if I believe it, so.
Relax.
Uh, for that, and then the only other thing is, like DPI, they do their enrollment, they did it on September, whatever, uh, for countable kids, for payment, and we're up nine kids from where we were last year, you know, and that doesn't count pre-K.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Speaking, is it, can I ask now, speaking of pre-Ks, the position, Phil?
Uh, we did offer to somebody, you don't, won't see a contract at this one, because it's a, uh, you know, it's a shortened contract, and I've gotta figure out the days and the money, you will see that at the November board meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
For the pre-K position that was.
For that.
Got it.
And, yep, and that was mine, I should've sent out an email to everybody, I just, it didn't cross my mind at the time, so.
She's verbally accepted, but even without seeing the contract, so.
Okay. Bonus.
Yes.
Okay. Wilson isn't here, so we'll just jump over here and say this is Bussy Elementary.
Um, what's this SB two thousand fifteen, does it affect us?
The only one, you're talking, no, the only one is, oh, where am I going here?
The transition.
The transition, yeah, that's the only one, because this year they went to ten percent instead of fifteen, so it's just a semantic of how much you're paying this year, you're gonna end up paying it at some point anyway, uh, whether it's fifteen or ten, so that's the only one that will, could affect Barnes County North.
Okay.
The other one, school constructions, the, well, the CTE.
It affects through CTE, yes.
Right, CTE inadvertently would affect us through Cheyenne Valley, Career and Tech, uh, PERS and school construction does not.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Yep.
So, we wrapped up our last learning lab on Friday, I gave the students and volunteers a survey to determine how they went, and in ways we can prove, I'm also giving the teachers one in our staff meeting tomorrow. There's lots of upcoming events that are being held between now and the next board meeting. Um, on November third, the elementary MTSS team is attending, uh, professional development in Jamestown, who started my first year here and did two major trainings that year, and then this is a follow-up to dig in and see how it's going. House points, and then another student read one million words so far, so I attached the October newsletter too, because I feel like a lot of information is in that, and sometimes is missed when it goes out in, in Joanne's email, so I figured that'd be a nice way to share that too. Yeah. Um, I did also send out an email to the parent list serve, um, with our music substitute teacher, we're moving the Christmas concert that we're fortunate to have um, to two PM on the same day that it was scheduled for, so, and then we're revisiting May because her semester courses change, so she, she won't necessarily be available on a Thursday, but it's, it's there to hold on to, so.
Okay, any questions?
Technology? Was she had in there, so the biggest things, uh, the money, or what, is that gonna be talked about in building grounds? She had.
The intercom.
Intercom system.
Oh, intercom system, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, is that, yeah.
Start there and then the budget, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Eventually, it all, eventually it all ends up in budget and finance.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We'll move to committee reports, the extracurriculars.
Yep, uh, Rob, Cody, you guys had a couple meetings.
Basically, all we've talked about is the Valley City co-op, moving down classes, not knowing how it's gonna affect us.
Still not really knowing.
No, we still have no idea. Looks like football is gonna stay double A as of now.
With us?
Yes.
As of now, yes.
Yeah.
Everything will stay the same on that for three more years, I think it was, that, uh?
Yeah, hoping, they're hoping to, they were looking at opting down with us, but since we've made the playoffs X number of times in the last four years, you, you can't even, that opportunity goes away.
Just changed the guidelines on Friday.
Yeah.
And then every year they make the playoffs and rolls it back.
Rolls it back, right.
You know more about the baseball and the out of right now, we were told when they go to class B, it eliminates those three co-ops.
Wow.
Was what?
Right.
JR said.
Yeah, with our meeting, JR and I met with those two, so basically, for sure, they have said baseball and softball in two years, they will go down to class B. This is coming from, you know, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Hunt, uh, for that, or they will push that avenue, or however you wanna say it for that. I mean, they like the wrestling co-op, uh, they were kind of torn within coaches of what they wanted to do, a little bit of it was, moving down to class B doesn't really necessarily mean more success, because they've had a lot of success in A, and class B has some tough wrestling schools, and Region One is one of them, as well, well, the southern region.
They walked into.
Yeah, so, that's not necessarily a, would be a better move for them, especially without us. You know, because of that express wrestling and looking at the future of the program, so that one was still up in the air a little bit. I mean, it's all, it's all up in the air, kind of.
Right, there are no definite, yes or no which way to go.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, all we can take from it is what, uh, we got from that meeting and JR's conversations that he's had with Mr. Hunt in the last couple weeks as well.
We did discuss other options for co-opping, but nothing was figured out or agreed on. I think the only other topic we had was the fifth and sixth grade basketball, and Mrs. Almond saved the day on that.
I have a little concern, just that we're having her drive the bus also, so when the bus driver is responsible for the bus, the children will have to count on a parent to be there, I don't know if that's what we asked Mrs. Scott to do last year too. It's a little concerning as the weather starts to turn, so I'm not sure, but if that's normal procedure or not, though, I guess, but.
Did you say because there wouldn't be another adult on the bus?
There, it would be Mrs. Almond with all the kids, so when she's in charge of parking the bus.
Oh, right.
We should make sure that we have a parent there responsible to get the kids in, or they'll have to wait with her or whatever, so. And that's my only concern, because that was the question I asked last month, is are we gonna have a bus driver? And I was told at the board meeting, because I went back and listened to it, there would be, but there is not, apparently Mrs. Almond is capable and more. I'm not concerned about safety-wise, I'm just saying, that's a lot of responsibility for somebody for away games, so. So I, I just.
Hopefully, I mean.
Was hoping we would have.
Kelly, can I ask how, how that worked? You ran through it, so lighten it up a bit.
They'll walk with me.
Okay.
That was what I was thinking, that.
Her city was different, there were two of us. Yeah, I usually just will park and they walk with me, or I, or I let them off at the very front door and tell them, I think I park and they just walk with me.
Okay.
Good.
And if the teachers are comfortable with it, it's a concern.
Yeah, and unfortunately, and I get that, but unfortunately now bus drivers.
Incredibly, and that was the question I had aside, but I didn't know what we were gonna do if it was a community member that had stepped up, so.
Right, yes.
I guess most of the schools they go to, the parking lots aren't full during the fifth and sixth grade games, so they probably can.
Yeah, depending upon what time.
There's parent teacher conferences tonight, so it was pretty chaotic, but.
Oh.
That was my, that's why I noticed it, so.
Well, I mean, does the bus need to be started during the game to warm up at some point? You know, that would be a.
Possibly.
Possible.
So, like, for her to leave and do that is impossible.
Especially for the girls' team, that would definitely be a need, right now boys will be done by.
Girls, a little kid, girls in the spring, so, I don't know, yeah, the spring, it's March.
Which, I mean, I would guess that any of those parents there would sit and wait five minutes for those kids to slide there.
And a lot of kids going home with parents, there's a proper form and all that, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware of what we're doing, so.
The, back to the extracurricular, we are still talking about our options moving forward, correct? Or?
It's, I mean, yeah, that's, that's the extracurricular.
Right.
Committee.
That's the way I understood it.
Yeah. I was just at the one, I wasn't at that second one, so, I mean, that's.
The way I thought it was, you told it, Rob, which. Yes, I, I believe our plan was to keep investigating options.
Our biggest concern was we didn't wanna be left in the dark and just, if something happened, we don't have no way, right? That's our concern, we wanna look forward than being behind the eight ball, essentially, so.
There was a survey for the kids on the football to see, the, the survey went to all the male.
Seven through ten.
Only seven through.
Seven through ta, oh, okay.
Yep.
So we didn't get any, really a good number off of that, because it switched on everyone.
Does that go to kids only then?
That survey, that survey did go to kids only, yes.
So what did that survey had, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, what were the options on the survey?
I'll pull it up here.
Yeah.
The same question.
Yeah, I, I think you guys get all them emails, but you don't.
So, Mr. Wilson sent out the survey stating as follows, option one, if BCN continued their football co-op with Val City, would you play? Ten of them said yes, eighteen no. Second option, if BCN co-op with Jamestown, would you play? Five yes, twenty-three no. Would you play football if BCN had their own team? Twelve yes, sixteen no.
So you got twenty-eight respondents out of how many?
So, is there twenty-eight kids that play football right now?
Supposed to be all boys.
No.
This is just the boys, so.
They sent it to boys seven through ten.
So, a lot of them boys probably don't play football anymore.
Some.
Correct, right, yeah.
I was talking to a couple parents, they said their kid just said no to all of it because they plan on going to Valley next year.
For school.
Have we considered, like, Makota?
Co-op thing.
Or another class B school at all?
That's, we, we talked about it.
Because I know a board member approached me out in the community from Makota, and I gave him Mr. Wilson's name.
Okay.
And they, you know, they didn't need the co-op with Greg's County, but there's things going on there too, so.
Personally, I'd like to just look at options, I mean, anything's on the table, I mean, I think Mr. Wilson, that was part of the thing, was for him to search that.
Right, that's exactly.
Are there kids not happy with the co-op right now?
The biggest thing is, we don't know where we stand, there hasn't been different information thrown at us from different sides of things, boards.
I'm kinda echoing a little bit what Tyler said, because it was, continue with Valley City, so, and there's predominantly a no, so, does that tell you there's a problem with the co-op right now? You know?
Yeah, it's.
That's what jumps out to me.
Yeah, our kids being overlooked because they're.
Yeah, it's a tough one, because if you look at it, I mean, a lot of them are.
I don't see that there at all.
Yes, sir.
Well, you also have to look at a program that's being fairly successful too, I mean, are, are we trying to just play, are we trying to be competitive, and, I mean, we gotta look at all.
Where do we wanna go with it, yeah?
And that's what we're trying to figure out.
Well, me and Cody both have a personal thing in this.
Yeah.
And it's been a little bit of a rough year, but the.
There was a coaching change this year.
Since this co-op thing got brought up, things haven't been going real well, but the last few years, the co-op has seemed fine.
It, well, I feel like there is a breakdown in trust with this thing, and that came out of nowhere, and that could be, I mean, with the unknown in kids, kids don't like the unknown and what is not, not knowing what's going to happen, and then for it to be, like, I had a text saying, and I said, well, if they go to class B, that'd be news to me, I'm an administrator, and then I had to text them back and be like, never mind. You know, so I feel like there is a breakdown in trust, which creates a ripple effect and tension.
That was part of it.
So, I can see that, being just an unknown with kids.
There, yeah, there's different factors out there right now that's, are kind of an issue.
And that's coming from somebody with no involvement in the co-op.
This is trickling all the way down into your six years.
It is, they are questioning it.
They're like, they see it, they hear it, they don't know, so am I gonna play with these kids this year or not?
Or.
Do I build relationships?
The unknown again, yep.
And that's the thing, that's what we were looking at, we just wanna be prepared, because we're not getting straight answers.
The kids get along great, kids get along, so as far as the young kids coming up, their teammates, they can be.
And I do think this is a discussion that we had with the Extracurricular Committee, but I wanna put it out there, like, you guys have to think about the future of other sports too.
That's what we are, right, yes.
And so, if they're not co-opping with us in basketball and these other things, we just can't compete with the Valley City if they're class B. I mean, we're eighty some enrollment in high school.
But basketball, volleyball don't have anything to do with it, because of the three-class system.
They'll stay in the middle, no matter what they do on the rest of this stuff.
Oh, they will, too.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's.
My trust is, if this came about, how will they fight for it in other sports too, just?
They won't fall apart on that.
The only one, they're not, softball won't change, I mean, they're not gonna be changing.
Sure.
Uh, wrestling, they're gonna be where they're, the only one that's really affecting is gonna be baseball. It's gonna really change.
Well, in, in our committee meeting, we were told all, all of them were gonna be changed.
Yeah, but.
So.
But there's exceptions.
There's exceptions for softball and wrestling.
In Valley said they were gonna petition the state class B in wrestling, but our committee meeting with Mr. Wilson, he said all three will be.
They're eligible to go B, but, but our numbers aren't gonna hurt them in softball and wrestling.
Yeah, in our meeting, like I said, they told us softball, baseball, or the two, they, uh.
And right now, according to.
They wanna do whatever they can to keep.
But that's what's, that's what's got us concerned as a committee, is we're not getting all the stories together, and it's concerning us, we don't want to be left in the dark. We don't wanna be, all of a sudden, boom, there goes a co-op and all of it.
So the future of all of our sports has been discussed.
We're looking at all of them.
Okay. Because I was a little surprised about how few kids were in elementary basketball.
Being co-op to three to four different co-ops, just for all, offering all the sports.
Sure.
That's where it was brought up, the survey came about, is maybe getting something in high school, and if, if there's enough kids to participate, so. So we're looking at all the options with every sport.
I think we need to make sure we invite community members.
I think that's gonna be a big thing.
To committee meetings or patron forums on this stuff, because while this conversation is great and it's out there for people to see, I don't know how many people are gonna seek it, so we need to make sure, and as Lindsay has always said, though, you invite, they don't come. But we need to make sure the invitation is open for communication, that's why I asked the question on the survey, if it was only to students?
Yep.
Because their parents ultimately make the decision.
Absolutely. And really, I mean, we're not looking, we weren't looking for just next year, the year after, right?
And.
That's why I asked.
Coming from somebody from elementary students too.
Get a number, even in elementary, we gotta look way beyond that too, so.
Well, I mean, want our community members that go to activities, whether they have students in the building or not, to feel invested in some of this stuff too.
Well, honestly, I mean, we're BCN, we gotta look out for our kids first. I mean, if we can keep as many people here, and they bring more people in, that's, that's the biggest thing, so, I think.
Already had a football co-op amped on us prematurely without warning, and essentially, and that's what I wanna prevent from happening again.
Right.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Good information, yeah.
Never had any of the others, I mean, haven't quit or stopped on us, but that did.
Right. And we have kids in multiple sports, different schools too, and we don't wanna take away that opportunity for it either, so.
Okay. Unfinished is the handbook. Which is, we have to think of.
It was made.
Yep.
I moved to approve the high school, or seven through twelve handbook, as presented.
Second, Rob, and there are discussion there, if not, roll call.
It was updated to the website, I assume?
That I don't know.
Doesn't have to be.
Well, the last one was up on the website, like we saw it last time, so, please follow through on that. Whomever.
Because it was up already last time, yeah.
Right. Okay, that's all I have. Rob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Okay, next is our, it's about the superintendent evaluation for November.
Yeah, so, my thoughts was, I was gonna do the same thing as last year on, do the form, or the formative one, where I pretty much write out my thoughts and you know, what's going well, what isn't going well, what I would, you know, do differently, or change, or stuff like that. And then the next one is the summative one, where you guys can make comments on the different areas, if you're okay with that. I mean, I'll, if you're all right with that, I'll, the next couple weeks, I'll have it done, and then I'll give you a few days to go through it, obviously, before we have an early board meeting again next November.
So the process, just, do I, so are we gonna have board put comments back on to get together? Or are we just gonna vote and have comments at the board meeting in November?
What would you like to do?
I'm asking for every, because we've gotta do something, we've gotta do it by century code both ways, and it really doesn't tell you, it just says, it says, honor before the fifteenth, the board shall conduct the evaluation of superintendent performance. And then you have to file that, so I mean.
Basically, all it's, I mean, to bare bone it, really, all you have to do is basically give me a satisfactory, unsatisfactory rating. Doesn't really tell you what process you need to use.
Right.
You just have to do that before November fifteenth for that, so.
But the paperwork would be that we have to sign by the fifteenth.
Yes.
So if we come to the board meeting, we still have to put all that on a piece of paper, and we're meeting on the.
We sent those to you by November first last year.
Right, but we're wondering if we wanna do the same type process. I'm thinking, I'm, I kinda like how Mr. Curry, that he brings us out and we come back and have discussion about it, but then we still have to make some comments or something else, or a vote.
A vote.
Could we just do a SAS factory vote?
Yes, we can.
Does that cover it?
Yes.
Yes, that could cover it, and I'm gonna double check with school, but we do need to vote a satisfactory by each category, yes.
Can you, can you, can somebody, not necessarily just you?
Yep.
Can we do our individual thing and you pull it together in summation, and we get that ahead of time? And then we can discuss it here with the Estern Noble.
Yes, that's what we have done, that's what we have.
I liked that, because then, like, our comments individually sometimes go this, and then somebody else will say something, like, oh, yeah, you know, something like that, so.
But in the past, I'm just saying.
Yep.
When we've done that, when we get here and we see them other comments, nobody goes anywhere with it. I think if we had the discussion at the meeting, it would open it up more.
Oh, yeah, I know, I like that too, yep.
But that's a whole different process.
So you're not gonna summarize beforehand then?
That's, my question is, I think, no, I think I'd rather send it out, he sends it out, we, I.
We do our individual homework.
We don't ask for comment, you, and then you come back and we would vote and have some discussion, maybe we'd make a couple notes, somebody would have to, but then we'd have to, it's somebody, I'd still have to put together comments if it was me, or type them out there.
You have to give everybody a deadline to go through it and do their homework, or they'll come without their homework done.
Well, and doing it that way, the homework is at the board.
Right?
Well, yeah, because you're talking.
Because you're talking.
Yeah, but you can talk on the fly, so, okay, if that's what you wanna do.
No, I'm asking for, we can do different ways. One, how we gotta still vote in November a satisfactory, unsatisfactory. If you want to have him send it out, then I'm gonna want it back, and that, then I compile it all, and all the comments are there, then you gotta decide. Because if something wants to stay in those comments or out, then we don't, that's the part we don't usually do.
But either way, I'm going to send it out. You have to read it before the board.
He's gonna do the self-evaluation either way.
Yes.
We want that.
Can I ask a question, just curious? So if everybody comes here and they're making comments, do you want me to keep track of all of those? Like, word for word type of situation, like, I don't know how you're gonna put those on paper.
No, because then you would decide what you wanna put into that, there'd be, of all the conversations, then what do you want in the evaluation? Then there'd just be specific things that you'd put in there, not every. Of all the conversations, then what do you want in the evaluation, then there'd just be specific things that you'd put in there, not every comment.
I think it should all be written down ahead of time, and then we can vote to add or scratch from.
Then we do it just as we done before.
I think, I, for ease of administrative side, but the discretion part, yes, I think that's an absolute.
Okay, then we're gonna do it similar to as we've done before.
But I like that, we'll talk.
You'll get it out by?
First part of November, early November.
And we meet on the?
Eighth.
Eighth.
So, what is it today? Yeah, I'll, I'll have it done by the, what's the first?
Wednesday.
Well, that would give us like five days to get through it.
By the first.
So then you?
That would give us five days to get through it, and how many days for?
Earlier than that.
Or is it November first?
Yeah, because we'd have to do it and get it back to him for a board meeting on the eighth.
Oh, is he, so you're gonna compile something?
That's what they're saying, yes.
I don't know if you need to, like, put them all on one form, do you?
Well, how else would I know?
Well, then you just pick which ones you're gonna put on, and then we'll compile it and submit it.
I don't worry.
I know, when do you want it?
Tomorrow.
Twenty-sixth, it's a third, next Thursday, before school board convention.
Yep.
Is that possible?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'd have one week to have it to you by the second.
Ideally, that would be.
Okay, let's write those dates out, everyone.
Yep. Okay. I have her back by the second.
I'm not trying to ramble on anything here.
Okay. We'll do the same as we did before, I want them back by the second. Return to learning plan.
Just, basically, it's a formality, as long as we get E S R funds, which we will through September of next year, so every six months, we gotta. Approve it, and we haven't changed anything in the last couple times, so, just a matter of just moving the approval date.
Motion to approve the return to learning plan.
Second it.
Second by Michelle. Any other discussion there, no, no changes?
No.
We'll roll call.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Next is strategic plan, we met. You were gonna get it out after the committee meeting.
I sent him the operational document instead of strategic planning document, but I did send it to him.
Yeah, sure, got it.
We got it.
We got it, but before, you were gonna send it to the committee people after our meeting, so we could peruse it. We got it in the packet.
I sent it.
When, no?
To him, I don't know.
The operational.
I sent the operational one right away, and then when he told me it wasn't that, I sent it to his office.
Cause I sent this one out, was for the packet, is the one that I sent to Lindsay, yeah.
But the commit, you're.
So, yeah, so I didn't.
It's not complete yet, and the committee hasn't seen it.
Right.
Right, so, yeah, so, no, I have not, to, yeah, sent it to committee.
Cause we left the committee, you said, don't tell you, we're gonna get it out so we can look at it.
Yeah.
I just thought I was gonna send it to him, but he can send it.
So I had it, but I just sent it out to the board packet, I didn't send it to committee, so, I need to still send it to committee then.
But you have, you still have to put your part in there yet, right, the message from the superintendent? It was in yellow, so.
Yeah, everything in yellow is highlighted to, that need, that needed to be done, but the yellow were the changes that were made by the committee. And that document is available on that Google.
Yep.
Yeah. For that, so, yeah, I can, I'll get it sent out to the committee, and we'll look at it in November.
Okay, so.
So we don't have a motion to make tonight?
That's what I'm saying.
No.
What we got here is that, some of them were.
To look.
Did the rest of it all look?
Did everybody look through it?
There's any questions anybody has on it?
Yeah, cause we have chance for feedback now.
Yes, yes.
And teachers. I mean, it'd be nice to know if you guys had anything before teachers came, so we can share those, you know, suggestions. Yeah, before we meet in November.
We spent, our la- I'll just talk about it, our last strategic planning meeting, we spent the entire time on pages twelve and thirteen, it was very. Um, a lot of different perspectives there, and there was a lot of discussion, and there's. Um. There's a lot of strong feelings about how the school building becomes cohesive in a community, as well as the, the whole school district. And there's small steps here that are trying to move forward on that, but a lot of things are, there was a lot of difference in opinion, because elementary. Can do things differently with the level of the students that they have there, as also, and those things aren't necessarily gonna work for the high school wing, where there is a more maturity level there, so. Trying to come up with ways to make it a community in the building, and so if you have thoughts on that, please speak to the strategic planning committee, cause. Um, even some of the students talked, um, some students don't love accolades, while some students do, and how to blend that, and as all of you have children, how do you make that work? Coming from a document on how we're going to teach your children, how does that work for your child, child, so. Um, I think that was a lot of the communication, and a lot of the issue we tried to cover, and I don't think we solved anything that day, but I think a lot of the steps in here, we'll move it more in that direction.
A lot of the objectives, whether it's just, then you get to the monitoring is where are we at, I mean, mo- monitor, but what's our baseline? How many times, where we want to go, we really don't have that defined in there at all.
Well, it's hard, because a lot of what we're asking and we're desiring is not qualitative.
Right.
Or quantitative, it's qualitative, so how do we base that our culture is getting better, how do we base that our community is getting tighter, how do we do that? And there's a lot of different opinions on that, so, uh, know that that question will come up again, this document will go for five years now. But it's gonna be an every-year thing, so.
It's reviewed every year.
Right, yes.
So that's some of the things that, yeah, we've talked about there. So if you got any, go through it again.
Yep.
Look at it. Get back to some of us on the committee there and just see. Fine-tune it a little bit, it's something we're working with, that's all we're supposed to base decisions on, is that, so.
And this has to be done for the school accreditation, so that's why we're trying to build in things that they can actually look and see that we're doing, so.
And showing, we want to show we're monitoring our improvements, and we're showing that, we need to track some of that stuff. And some things, the discussion too, is, do we need to track some, don't we need to track some, what, what's trackable, what we don't need to monitor, you know? So, okay, we'll just table that one until next month. Tuition agreement is next.
There's three of them.
Okay.
Um, the first one is Jamestown coming to B C N.
I move to accept the tuition agreement as stated.
I second.
Second by Michelle. You ready, roll call, Andy?
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
The second one is B C N to Jamestown.
Are these, can I ask, are these already, kids are already where they're going to be?
Don't know.
I just get these handed to me, I don't know anything about them, so.
Do you know?
No.
No, they're not.
High school.
This one might be though.
That one is, this one is not, coming here, is not yet.
Okay.
Uh, seventh grader, pretty sure.
Just so we know, like.
And then a lot.
That are already coming in the D P.
Out, yeah, that's already there.
Got it, got it. So move to accept the tuition agreement as stated.
Is there a second to that one?
A second.
Rob? Roll call, when you're ready, easy.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And the third one.
The third one is also B C N to Jamestown. And it's three students.
That one's three, the other were just ones?
Mm-hmm.
This one's three, okay. Okay.
I'll go to trifecta, so move to accept the tradition, tradition agreement as stated.
Is there a second? Michelle? Lindsay, roll call.
Michelle?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And what grades are those three in?
Um, all high school, seven, nine, twelve.
Okay. Unpaid leave request we have in there. Sure you all seen it?
Yep.
Read it, yeah.
Uh, sorry, can I go back real quick? Do we ever get a reason why?
Sometimes.
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
Is it required or not, or just?
Does it say on that form, on open enrollments, it does, I'm not sure it says. Uh, and sometime, uh, the one family, I don't even know, the other one left just, uh, because of order offer and just fit and. Uh, for that, you know, some coming in, you know, whether it's family or want to be in a smaller school, or.
It would be kinda nice to know.
An exit survey?
Right, like a, like an exit survey, exactly.
Yeah.
If it is just something not related to the school, or if it was a problem, it'd be nice to know that too.
Right, yeah. Except the one family, I don't, I don't even know.
Okay.
On here.
Okay, move back to the unpaid leave request.
I'll make a motion to approve unpaid leave request.
Second.
Do we have to list the name in the minutes?
I was gonna say, is anybody gonna like?
You gotta list the name for the minutes.
Oh, oh, sorry. Rosa Bitz unpaid leave request, sorry, I didn't know.
Still second, yeah.
I will still second Mrs. Bitz's request.
Any other discussion, not roll call.
Tyler?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Miss Lee, family connection, anything there?
Family connection, are you gonna set up, uh, P T supper again, or?
Well, that's the school.
That's actually the board.
Oh, the board, okay, all right.
And, yes.
I thought that was another question, okay.
That's okay.
Curry and Tech, I sent out.
Yes.
The agendas and everything, so if you got any questions, they're coming up on Thursday, so if you got anything that, on there you see, let me know. We're gonna find out, we're still working on. Architect and stuff, that bill there affects our extra monies on there, so, that'll be discussed Thursday.